All right, we are now on the record.
We are live.
Good morning. My name is Connie Owen and I'm the presiding officer in this matter. We are resuming the public hearing for the City of Wichita's request to modify their ASR Phase Two project. The actual title of this case is, "In the Matter of the City of Wichita's Phase Two Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project in Harvey and Sedgwick Counties, Kansas, Case Number 18 Water 14014." This is February 19, 2021 at 8:34 in the morning. This public hearing is being conducted in a purely virtual format in which we have a Zoom meeting and for public access, we also have a YouTube channel that is streaming these proceedings. Today's testimony will be closing arguments from counsel for all four parties. Testimony has concluded, so we will not have any more testimony. I would remind anyone interested that public comments may still be submitted in writing regarding this case no later than 5:00 PM on February 26, 2021, and those would be submitted either by regular mail or by email to Rhonda Hutton at the Division of Water Resources. And the Division of Water Resources has a website and they have a page dedicated to the Wichita ASR case, and on that page you'll find instructions for how to submit public comments in writing. Following today's hearing, there will be a briefing schedule for the parties, and then after the briefing is all concluded, then an order, a recommended order, will be issued to the chief engineer and to the parties simultaneously. Details of that briefing schedule will be set forth and an order to be issued in the next few days. As a housekeeping item, the groundwater management district on February 5th had filed a motion in limine to exclude rebuttal expert testimony of the city, and through an agreement reached between the parties on the record during the hearing on February 5th, that motion has been resolved and no ruling is necessary. For today's closing arguments, each party is allowed one hour total. Each party may, at its discretion, reserve part of that hour to present a rebuttal argument after all the other parties have presented, have had an opportunity to present their closing arguments. The order in which we will take presentations is the city, followed by the Division of Water Resources, followed by the groundwater management district, and then the intervenors. Are there any other matters that we should attend to before we take appearances and begin? Okay, so in the order that I just mentioned, may we please have appearances today?
Ryan McLeod, Deputy City Attorney for the City of Wichita, Kansas.
Stephanie Murray for DWR.
Yeah, the Equus Beds Groundwater Management District Number Two appears by Dave Stuckey and Tom Adrian.
Test of one link for the intervenors.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. McLeod, you're up.
Thank you. I do want to reserve 20 minutes for rebuttal, and I will try to keep my focus on, on large points. Given the scope of the record, I'm, I'm really not sure what we'll accomplish with argument today, but I will try to stay out of the weeds. Initially, I want to reiterate the point that the city's proposal has two independent elements. One is establishing the modified accounting procedure to recognize aquifer maintenance credits, and the other is revising the existing lower index levels from those interpolated in 1993 to levels that would allow expanded access to credits at ASR II facilities to alleviate stranding of credits in a prolonged drought. These proposed modifications are not dependent on one another. Each would be useful separately. Each could be approved without the other. Also, for clarity, I think there is a need to emphasize that some of the topics discussed in the proposal for purposes of background and transparency are not requested permit modifications, but are background decisions that have already been made by the City of Wichita. These include the Wichita City Council's decision to plan for drought mitigation using the 1% drought modeled by High Country Hydrology. This is a policy decision made by the city's governing body. The same is true of the features of the city's existing water conservation program and the triggers and planned responsive measures in the city's existing drought response plan. Likewise, as to city determinations based on city council policy direction and subsequent analysis to first pursue drought remediation planning in part through ASR recharge credits, and second, to pursue a goal of accumulating at least 60,000 acre feet of credits for this drought remediation purpose. The district and intervenors may not like the City of Wichita's decision to plan the use of ASR recharge credits for drought mitigation or to accumulate at least 60,000 acre feet of credits for that purpose, but those decisions have been made and are not among the issues to be decided in this hearing. The consideration relevant to the proposal is whether the credits will be accumulated under existing ASR permit conditions or with the modifications proposed by the city. In their arguments opposing the proposal, the district and interveners have focused to date on comparing possible impacts of the proposal with a scenario where the city makes no changes from its management of water resources under the city's 1993 integrated local water supply plan. That is, their analyses compare the possible impacts of the proposal with their wishful scenario in which, first, the city would only use ASR intermittently to help keep the aquifer full rather than to accumulate recharge credits for drought mitigation, and second, that the city would continue to substantially underuse its 40,000 acre feet of senior water rights every year so that that water is available to irrigators. That is a flawed approach because instead, the relevant comparison for purposes of evaluating the proposal would be comparison of the possible impacts of the proposal with the impacts that would occur under the current ASR accounting method with the existing lower index levels. So turning specifically to discussion of physical recharge accounting versus the accounting with alternative, excuse me, aquifer maintenance credits, I will try to, to do that with respect to the AMCs. As shown in, in Figure 12 of the proposal, which was on page 33 of the proposal and discussed by Mr. Pager during his testimony, between 1993 and 1998, the city shifted from using Equus Beds groundwater as its main source of supply to using Sheeney Reservoir as its main source of supply instead. As a result of that shift, surface water became 60% rather than 40% of the city's overall water source. And as shown by Figure 13 in the proposal, which was on page 3-4, by 2016, water levels in the aquifer increased by more than 30 feet in some places as a result. The Figure 12 in the proposal, to which I previously alluded, also shows that irrigator use continued to trend above 1993 in all years. So we know indeed that the recovery of the aquifer was due to the City of Wichita's stewardship and change in practices and not to new conservation measures on the part of irrigators. As a result of the city's change in water resource management, and to a lesser extent, the ASR I and ASR II recharge activities that commenced in 2007 and 2013 respectively, the aquifer has been restored to near pre-development levels, which unfortunately limits the potential for additional physical recharge. As a consequence, and as mentioned in 2.4.2 of the proposal on page 2-11, to create potential for efficient physical recharge at the ASR plant capacity rate of 30 million gallons per day under existing permit conditions, the city would need to reduce the water levels in the aquifer to 1998 water levels. There is a road to this result. Under existing permit conditions, the city can accomplish this by reversing its 1993 resource management practices and using as much of its annual 40,000 acre feet senior rights in the aquifer as system needs and treatment plant capacity will allow. After reduction of aquifer levels to the 1998 levels, the city would accrue credits by physical recharge to the extent allowed by plant permit conditions and plant capacity, but would also continue to use its 40,000 acre feet senior rights to maintain aquifer levels of the 1998 levels until at least 60,000 acre feet and recharge credits were accumulated. We, we have reason to think, based on accrual of credits over, over history, that we would be talking about a significant span of
A significant what?
A significant span of years during which the aquifer levels would have to be maintained at 1998 levels to facilitate that physical recharge. And the city in that scenario would be basically taking water out and putting water in to get the recharge credits. So the, the level of the aquifer would not change as a result of that conduct, but over time progressively more of the water in the aquifer would be city physical recharge credits. Indeed, under existing permit conditions, the city could actually do this indefinitely as under current permit conditions, there is no existing cap on credits. And credit retention at the 1998 water levels, as was mentioned on page 4-2 of the proposal, would be at 95%. So the aquifer by this management would be kept at 1998 levels, but progressively more of the water, potentially the entire basin storage area, would become city physical recharge credits over time. If the modeled eight-year drought were to occur with the aquifer at 1998 levels, and recall this, this is how it has been modeled by both Burns &amp; Mack and Ballou groundwater. The modeling shows, and then let me just refer here to Ballou Groundwater's modeling, shows that the full use of the city's 40,000 acre feet of senior rights during the drought would potentially impact supply of 29 wells, which appear from Ballou's Figure 7 in their report to be 27 domestic wells and two irrigation wells. The additional potential impact that they have assigned to the modifications in the proposal, modeling on the assumption that the city would pump credits to reach the proposed new lower index levels with six additional wells, all of which were domestic wells. That is, the majority of wells impacted by city pumping in the Ballou modeling will be impacted by the city's existing 40,000 acre feet rights if the aquifer enters the drought at 1998 levels due to the need to facilitate physical recharge under the existing permit conditions. Looking also at chloride impacts, comparison of the wellsite maps introduced by intervenors with the contour maps in Figure 6 of the Ballou report reflects that the intervenors who testified will likely not lose access to water at their wells in the modeled drought, even if the ASR permit modifications are approved. And I think at least one of the intervenors acknowledged in his testimony that his well is not in danger of being dewatered. To the extent that the testifying intervenors are worried about chlorides, which did seem to be all of their main concern, they are likely to have greater chloride problems under existing permit conditions than with the proposed modifications. The Clogger graphic, which is Figure 8 of the Ballou report, projects chloride impacts from the 2014 USGS study, which modeled several scenarios. The import of the scenarios modeled in 2014, and also George Austin's testimony on the earlier chloride transportation study referenced in his report, is that the wells in the chloride threatened areas will be impacted by the city's increased use of its 40,000 acre feet senior rights to reduce aquifer levels to 1998 levels. And also will be impacted by the maintenance of the 1998 levels to facilitate physical recharge for a long period of years. And I think Mr. Austin acknowledged in his testimony that the impact of low water levels for a long period of years could potentially be much greater for chloride migration concerns than a transitory impact caused by pumping with the modifications proposed by the city in an occasional severe but transitory drought. Further, if we look at Figure 6 of the Ballou report, it reflects that impact on water levels in this part of the aquifer, that is, the part of the aquifer where the interveners' wells were mapped, in the modeled eight-year drought will be closely similar. Whether or not the proposed permit modifications are approved, I think it was a cumulative difference of a foot or two. And this suggests that the chloride impacts from the drought, to the extent directly related to changes in water gradient, would also be closely similar, whether or not the proposed modifications are approved. Now, if we look at the mitigating effects of the proposed accounting changes to allow aquifer maintenance credits, the first large one is the city would not need to draw aquifer levels down to 1998 levels to accumulate credits. Indeed, the accounting method would provide an incentive not to do that because to the extent the city could use the AMC accounting method and leave the aquifer full, a lesser leakage rate is imputed than what the, the leakage rate from actual physical recharge of a very full aquifer would be. As a result, the immediate impacts to water levels and chloride migration posed by use of the city's 40,000 acre feet senior rights to lower the aquifer to 1998 levels would not occur in the AMC scenario. As a further result, the impacts to water levels and chloride migration from maintaining the aquifer at 1998 levels for a long period of years to facilitate physical recharge also would not occur. Consequently, for most periods, with the exception of major droughts, similar to the modeled eight-year 1% drought, the aquifer would be maintained at near pre-development levels, and the city would resume the practice of drawing most of its supply from Sheeney Reservoir, leaving most of its 40,000 acre foot annual rights in the aquifer unexercised, which would benefit other users. Even in the period of a major drought, under the AMC proposal, drought impacts would be lessened by going into the drought with the aquifer full rather than at 1998 levels. And if the six domestic wells identified in the Ballou study were still affected at all, it would be for the transitory period impacted by the drought. So something that, that would be an issue potentially in eight out of 100 years, possibly. As demonstrated at length in hypotheticals during the testimony of several witnesses, the net quantitative effect on the aquifer of taking out water and putting it back for a physical credit is the same as treating water from the river instead of taking that water from the aquifer and getting a credit for that. Former Chief Engineer Barfield was correct in reasoning that the AMCs are a functional equivalent of physical credits accrued by taking water out and then recharging it. Additionally, the aquifer maintenance credit has the cost advantage of skipping that withdrawal recharge step. And in so doing, it also avoids a churning of the aquifer from withdrawing water then injecting new water, which is a benefit to water quality in that we're not stirring the water up all the time under the AMC scenario, and which also reduces the potential underflow and sinkhole issues that so concerned Mr. Carmichael in his testimony. Overall, the modeling presented by the parties in this case reflects that the AMC accounting mechanism provides substantial benefits to all users of the aquifer in all periods, with potential offsetting transitory detriment to a small number of domestic wells that might need to be extended in the event of a modeled eight-year drought. Turning to the revised index levels, the problem with the existing index levels is that they place the onus on the city to make a resource management decision to take credits early in any drought before the city can really evaluate whether that drought will be of a severity and nature to necessitate that use of credits. That decision to take early, early use of credits in the early years of a possible extended drought would reduce the water levels in the aquifer unnecessarily in those early years of the drought, unfavorably impacting all users of the aquifer. And once gone, the water taken early to preserve credits will likely be gone for the duration of the drought. Further, under the current accounting method, the only existing credits are physical recharge credits. And I think it was Mr. Pope who testified that a large part of the theoretical basis for the physical recharge credits is that the city has, has reduced that water to its dominion and control, treated it and put it in storage, and that for practical purposes, unlike most use of fruks in water rights, it should be regarded as the city's water. But when credits become stranded in a major drought due to the 1993 index levels, the effect of that stranding is that other parties are unfairly allowed to take the water that the city injected in the aquifer, while the city, no matter how badly it may need that water by that point in a protracted drought, cannot take the water, although the city is the party responsible for the existence of that water in the aquifer. I would point out, the Ballou report does also confirm the conclusions of the Burns MacDonald modeling that some credits would be stranded in the modeled drought, and also shows that only a handful of additional domestic wells have been identified as impacted if the city were allowed to take accumulated credits between the existing and proposed new index levels. All in all, the city's stewardship of the aquifer since 1993 has been exemplary, if not indeed extremely generous to other users of the aquifer overall. The proposed modifications to the existing permit conditions are really offered to enable the city to continue to follow its 1993 resource management practices while also using ASR infrastructure to advance its drought mitigation concerns. Essentially, the modifications would be a mitigation of impacts that will occur to other aquifer users if the city has to proceed under existing permit conditions. And with that, I will, I will wrap up my remarks and, and save further for rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLeod. And as I understand it, you've reserved 20 minutes for rebuttal, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the Division of Water Resources, please.
Thank you. I would like to also reserve 20 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm going to also keep my closing argument remarks brief for a couple of reasons. The first is that, as Mr. McLeod mentioned, I really feel that the effectiveness of any oral advocacy is going to be limited here, given the length of these proceedings and the size of the record in this matter. And the second is that DWR is in a bit of a unique position here as we are neither the party that is necessarily advocating for the approval of the city's proposal or the party that's opposing it. So that being said, I'll save the majority of DWR's comments for our post-hearing brief after the agency's had more time to thoroughly review the record and all of the testimony that's been presented. I do, however, have just a few largely bigger picture points that I would like to make in closing. To frame my comments, I want to first address the contention that we've heard several times that the proposal would allow the city to use water that is already earmarked for another user or essentially water that already belongs to someone else. I feel the need to address this because I really feel that this contention and the implication that it carries mischaracterizes a fundamental aspect of Kansas water law. The district alleges an unconstitutional taking in its motion to dismiss, and Mr. Stuckey elicited a lot of testimony the last time we were together that I believe was probably aimed at bolstering that argument. He asked several witnesses, for example, whether they had ever given the City of Wichita permission to pump water from under their land, as well as asking them to estimate the investment-backed expectation that they had in their property. Now, I bring this up because the answers to questions of that nature, frankly, are just not relevant. The implication that permission from an overlying landowner is required to pump groundwater is contrary to the fundamental principle of Western water law, that a water right is a use of frukt right. That is, it is a right to put water to beneficial use within the quantity and rate limitations of your own water right, but it is not a right to own or to otherwise control water in a river or water in state in an aquifer. Water in state in an aquifer, in fact, does not belong to anyone. And the, the mere fact that another user would have also had the lawful right to that water had they removed it from the ground first does not mean that the first user has taken water that belonged to the second. This principle is well-established and fosters the development of water for economic gain, a major tenet of the doctrine of prior appropriation. So with that general principle in mind, I next want to touch on this issue of distrust between the City of Wichita and surrounding smaller municipalities, irrigators, and domestic users that both the district and the interveners have brought up on several occasions. I want to say that DWR recognizes that this distrust exists and that it is very real for those water users who have lived in close quarters with the city, some of them for decades, as you heard testimony about. However, I want to emphasize that while we do recognize that a significant level of distrust does exist, it would just simply be inappropriate to allow that distrust and events that happened 40, 50, or 60 years ago to color our judgment regarding the proposal that's in front of us today. Further, I want to emphasize and, and I really hope provide some reassurance that DWR has always been and remains committed to holding the city accountable, the same as we would any other water user, whether this proposal is approved or not. Excuse me. On a related note, I think that this distrust has probably informed the district and the interveners' characterization of the ASR project in several pleadings and the general theme advanced by those parties throughout the proceedings that to grant the city what it's asking for here would unfairly reward it for poor water management. You know, DWR just doesn't see it that we, that way. We actually feel that the city has been a good steward of the aquifer and that its good management is a very significant reason for the rebound in water levels since 1993 and the high water table seen in the Equus Beds today. Actually, as Mr. McLeod kind of alluded to, the city's own good management is part of the reason it has need for this proposal. The aquifer is so full now that there is no space to inject water for the accumulation of physical recharge credits as the city originally intended to do. Now, it is true, you heard some testimony from the interveners saying that, that ASR doesn't work. It's true that the ASR project hasn't always run perfectly, but the fact that there were some bumps in the road as things got rolling doesn't mean that the project has failed. Likewise, the fact that the city Likewise, the fact that the city's view of how the ASR project fits into its overall water management strategy and how that, the fact that that view has evolved over time doesn't mean that the ASR project has failed or doesn't work as some testimony has suggested. In any case, it's DWR's view that it's simply not accurate to suggest that granting the city's proposal would reward it for poor water management. Along those lines, I, I do want to acknowledge though that DWR does feel that probably from the very inception of the ASR project, the city has not always marketed the project as well as it maybe could have. We do believe that more or better focused public outreach along the way likely could have headed off some of these concerns that you have, have heard brought forth throughout these proceedings long before we got to this point. However, similar to, to this issue of distrust that I spoke about a moment ago, it would likewise be inappropriate to disregard the key facts that support the reasonableness of this proposal, simply because the city may not have conveyed those facts to the public in the man, in the manner that it perhaps could have. So turning to those few key facts that support the reasonableness of the proposal, it is DWR's view that the bulk of the testimony elicited by both the district and the interveners has really keyed on things that are not truly relevant and have simply obscured and unnecessarily complicated those key facts. First, it's DWR's opinion that the effects of the proposal from a hydro geological standpoint are almost universally good ones. In times of normal rainfall, the proposal would allow the aquifer to be managed at a fuller level. This has numerous benefits. A stable hydraulic gradient that will slow the encroachment of the Burton salt plume, lower pumping costs to all irrigators in the area, and of course, better drought preparedness. Additionally, during times of normal rainfall, maintaining the aquifer at a fuller level will cause the little arc to gain water from the aquifer, mitigating the need for any administration of water rights to protect minimum desirable stream flow on the river, which I will touch on again a bit later. Overall, much of the expert testimony presented by the district and the interveners has simply ignored the benefits that the proposal will provide during all of the times that the area is not experiencing a 1% drought, while also ignoring the fact that the city's model shows that even in the last year of a 1% drought in which the city has pumped all of the water that the proposal would allow it to, the equis beds will remain 80% full on average. Now, the district's experts have picked that model apart, arguing that its projections may not be exactly right and that the aquifer could actually be somewhat lower than what the city's model shows after times of high pumping. So those possibilities and a potential for that degree of error in modeling would be concerning to DWR if we were talking about a proposal that was projected to leave the aquifer 10, 20, 30% full. But the fact is that even a proposal that only leaves the aquifer 70% full versus 80% full is still very much a reasonable proposal in our view. DWR does not hold any groundwater modeling that it reviews to a standard that it be perfect or that it exhaustively account for every potential that you could ever think of. And the city's modeling here shouldn't be held to that standard either. DWR has seen nothing really to suggest that the city's modeling work was not perfectly sufficient for its intended purpose. It's also important to keep in mind on this point that the equis beds see excellent natural recharge compared to most of the rest of the High Plains aquifer. So would likely rebound well once a drought ended as we saw and as, as they did following 1993. So I mentioned water levels in the aquifer under the proposal a moment ago. And that brings me to my next point, which concerns the district and the interveners' contention that the city should have been required to meet the standards set out in the provisions of the Kansas Water Appropriation Act that govern applications for new appropriations and change applications. Prominent among those requirements is a showing that the new appropriation or change will not cause impairment to other water users, which we have heard a lot of testimony about. So first and very importantly, I want to emphasize that the city's proposal does not constitute either an application for a new appropriation or a change application. And the standards set out in those statutory provisions thus do not actually apply. Second, and perhaps even more important, I want to stress that DWR does not ever deny any kind of application or any kind of proposal because of a speculative potential that the water right at issue might cause an impairment to some unknown user at some unknown point in the future. Our impairment statutes simply don't function that way and they were not intended to. Those statutes exist to allow us to administer water rights after an impairment has been shown. And those, those protections exist today, right now, and they will remain in place to protect any irrigator or domestic user who is in fact impaired by the city's water use under the proposal or at any time. So it's the same with the MDS argument that we heard a lot about more recently. DWR will administer water rights as necessary if and when MDS is impacted, but we never preemptively deny water use just because MDS might be impacted at some point in the future. I also want to point out that, that in fact, GMD2's governing regulations don't mention MDS anywhere. And further taking, further and, and importantly, taking the approach that the district and the interveners have seemed to advocate for in this regard would actually discourage development and the application of water to beneficial use by all people of the state, which again is contrary to, to the general principles of Kansas water law. Of course, I also do want to note that the city has expressed throughout its willingness to agree to MOU terms that would protect nearby users as well. So I, I also have a few points I want to make on the topic of aquifer maintenance credits specifically. First, as to the proposed 120,000 acre foot cap on recharge credits, I want to point out, as I think Mr. McLeod also did, that currently no cap exists at all on the recharge credits that the city is allowed to accumulate. Also, the city has projected a maximum demand of 20,000 credits in the worst year of a 1% drought, which is only a small portion of the proposed overall cap accumulation quantity of 120,000 acre feet. As I think Mr. McLeod also said, it's additionally important to remember that once these credits are used, are used, they're gone. They don't renew every year. So there is not a scenario in which the city would take 120,000 acre feet of credits out of the aquifer in back-to-back years. It's going to take a significant amount of time to rebuild those credits. So again, the 120,000 acre foot number is a proposed overall cap for all credit accumulation, not a representation of what the city has proposed to or whatever need to take out of the aquifer at any one time or in any one given year. So DWR really doesn't even necessarily feel that this 120,000 acre foot number is all that critical as each ASR well will still continue to be governed by its annual authorized quantity. So I, I also want to emphasize that when the city is pumping ASR credits, it is not pumping native equis beds water. It is pumping water that either originated as surface water and came to be in the aquifer through physical recharge, or if the proposal is approved, a water that could have originated as surface water and is treated as surface water through the proposed accounting adjustment. So turning now to the issue of passive recharge, I want to emphasize that it remains DWR's position that passive recharge is not and should not be allowed. It is simply our view that what the city has proposed here does not constitute passive recharge and does fit within the existing regulatory framework that governs the ASR project. Water for which the city accumulates AMCs under the proposal will pass through Wichita's ASR diversion and treatment infrastructure and will be subject to the existing quantity and rate limitations of those permits. So it is therefore, in our opinion, not passive recharge as it moves through that infrastructure and it is permissible under existing law. Finally, I want to address the argument that the district has made so much of that this proposal will basically allow the city to get two beneficial uses of water for one. On this point, I just want to emphasize that the city could, right now, today, if it had the high surface water flows on the little arc necessary to do it, pump a hole in the aquifer, take that water to town, inject treated little arc surface water into the aquifer and then turn right around and pump that same water back out of the aquifer and also take it to town. All that the proposal really does as it pertains to AMCs is essentially just cut out the intermediate step of pumping the hole in the aquifer, which for the same reasons I discussed at the beginning of my remarks, is beneficial for the health of the aquifer and for all water users in the area. So now that I've kind of circled back to where I began, I'll conclude by saying that DWR has so far not seen anything that changes the agency's initial conclusion that the city's proposal is both reasonable and legal. With that being said, though, we are committed to conducting a thorough review of the voluminous record in this matter. And I will certainly expand on each of the points I've raised today in our post-hearing brief, once we have had time to conduct such a review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Next, we have the groundwater management district. Dave or Tom, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Obviously, this has been a long hearing and there's been a lot of testimony and a lot of evidence. And so I certainly agree with Mr. McLeod and Ms. Murray in that regard. And it's difficult to try and summarize positions in some brief closing arguments. However, I'll do my absolute best. Now, indeed, the district has a very different take than the, what was just stated by the city or the Division of Water Resources. But before I delve into our many arguments in this case, I would like to start with a demonstration that I think is illustrative of the very heart of the district's position. Throughout this hearing, a gallon of water was referred to metaphorically through a bottle of water. Likewise, throughout this hearing, we heard that the equis bed's aquifer is that metaphorical box. So as a consequence, I have that gallon of water and I have a box representing the equis beds aquifer. With physical recharge credits, the important piece is that a gallon of water is taken from the river and it's injected directly into the aquifer. And as you can see, that gallon of water, which was injected into the aquifer, is then available to take out at a later time. And so at that future point, the city can then take that gallon of water out and use it in town for municipal purposes. Now let's fast forward for a moment and talk about the aquifer maintenance credit approach. This same gallon of water will be taken directly from the Little Arc Kansas River and shipped off to the city of Wichita. As you can see, as we look in the aquifer in this box, there's no gallon of water that's been put into the aquifer. It's been shipped directly to the city of Wichita. Yet somehow, through some magical accounting, the city of Wichita will divert another gallon of water out of the aquifer at a later time. Somehow, the city has created a two-for-one benefit through this accounting that they're able to do. So through this hocus pocus, the city has doubled its quantity. Through its aquifer maintenance credit proposal, the city is attempting to perform a magic act by conjuring up new water and new water rights. So the city is asking you, as the hearing officer, to perform a metaphorical swish of your wand and allow for the prohibited concept of doubling a consumptive use and to bless a new concept prohibited by statutes and regulations. So this illustrates our overarching concern with the city's proposal. But indeed, our concerns run much deeper than that. But before we get into all those concerns, I'd like to touch on a brief summary of our understanding of the city's proposed modifications. First of all, with respect to aquifer maintenance credits, the city is asking for a credit for water left in storage that was not placed there by the city in the first place and is already dedicated to other water users. Second of all, with respect to lowering the minimum index level, the city is proposing to do that anywhere from nine to 23 feet, depending on where in the aquifer it's located. But finally, and this responds to some comments made by Ms. Murray just a moment ago, it's important to stress that the city's proposed modifications apply not only to existing ASR Phase II permits, but also could apply to any future ASR permits obtained by the city. Therefore, the city can accelerate their withdrawal in the future. But I'd also like to touch on another comment that was raised by Ms. Murray just a moment ago as far as what the city must prove and what their burden of proof is. And what's quite important in this case is the fact that there's three orders that govern this hearing. There were two that were signed by Mr. Barfield and there was one that was signed by you as the hearing officer. And in those orders, it's quite clear what is specified. It states in those orders, "To meet its burden, the city must establish that it, quote, 'can meet the requirements set forth for aquifer storage and recovery projects in KAR 5-12-1 and the requirement set forth in KSA 82A-708B, including that the proposed changes are reasonable and will not cause impairment and that the proposed changes relate to the same local source of supply. Whether or not a change is reasonable should consider the effect upon the public interest,' end quote." In addressing impairment and the public interest, these statutes that are referenced in the orders further specify the city's duty to show that its proposal will not unreasonably interfere with minimum desirable stream flow, undermine safe yield, cause an unreasonable lowering of the water table and adversely impact water quality. So the very orders that have been adopted in this case to govern this hearing require the city to show those elements. So to meet its burden of proof by a preponderance of the evidence in this case, the city must demonstrate that it can meet all of those elements as outlined in the specific orders adopted in this hearing, contrary what the Division of Water Resources argued just a moment ago. So with this framework in mind that the city must meet, we now move to a threshold argument. And that threshold argument is that there is no statutory or regulatory mechanism for these proposed modifications. As we indicated through our testimony, there was no change application filed and there has been no new application filed in this case. Yet, the city wants to change the two most fundamental aspects of their existing ASR permits. First of all, the city wants to change how recharge credits are accumulated and retained. And second of all, the city wants to change how those credits can be withdrawn at a later time. Those are the two most fundamental aspects of their permits. The city is asking now to retroactively change those aspects of their permits. Yet they have not filed a change application or a new application. Now, the Kansas Water Appropriation Act does allow for some changes to water permits, such as the place of use, the point of diversion, the use made of water and some other minor changes. But these changes by the city are outside the scope of what can be changed. An analogy of this would be in a zoning context. You can't go to district court and pursue a zoning change if no application is filed before the governing body. Likewise, because the city has not filed a change application or a new application, their proposal is facially invalid at the threshold. But if we were to get beyond these procedural hurdles, the next major concern identified by the district has to do with the city's modeling, starting with the MODSIM modeling and the limitations with drought modeling. We indicated that, number one, there's limitations to the Palmer drought severity index. Second of all, we indicated through testimony that there was a lack of historical, local, regional, regional data to outline this drought modeling. to outline this drought modeling. But finally, another concern identified was that there is no set 1% drought scenario. It doesn't have to be eight years, for example, as the city modeled. But the concerns with the MODSIM modeling just really scratched the surface when it came to the concerns that the district identified with the MODFLOW modeling. First of all, the district identified errors in the tables that were proposed by the city. We showed that there were errors in tables such as 2.5, 2-10, and other errors that we identified in the modeling and throughout the proposal. Also, it was testified that there were potential errors in the input files that were utilized by the city. But finally, the city's modeling fails to take into account crucial variables. For example, number one, the river flow drying up. Mr. McCormick admitted that the city's modeling didn't take into account the possibility that the Little Ark Kansas River or the Ark Kansas River could dry up. And as Kansans, we know that that's a distinct possibility. Mr. McCormick indicated that this modeling could have been performed, but it would have been timely and expensive. Mr. Romero, on the other hand, said that this modeling could have been done with minimal additional effort and was a critical analysis that should have been performed by the city. But the second major concern or variable that wasn't taken into account was the fact that the city started with 1998 levels and was unable to demonstrate the defensibility of starting with this metric. So we are asking you, as the hearing officer, to ensure that shortcuts are not taken at the expense of the other water users of the aquifer. But with that in mind, there's one concept we agree with the city and the Division of Water Resources on, and that is that there should be a cap on the accumulation and withdrawal of physical recharge credits. Now, a moment ago, Ms. Murray also said that the cap of 120,000, it doesn't really matter because it's limited based on how much you can withdraw per year. Now, although there is a limit on how much it can be withdrawn per year, we think the cap of 120,000 acre feet does matter. Through the city's own testimony, they indicated that in an extreme drought scenario, the most they would need, in addition to their native water rights, is only approximately about 50,000 acre feet. And so as a consequence, we're proposing to you that it makes sense to place the cap at 50,000 acre feet for the accumulation of physical recharge credits. But once we move beyond this concept of a cap, we come to the aquifer maintenance credit accounting methodology. What you heard in the testimony of our experts is that there's a vast discrepancy between low and high water levels. The city's proposal used low 1998 aquifer water levels, which minimized recharge credit loss and optimized AMC retention. In fact, Mr. McCormick, in his testimony, when cross-examined by Ms. Wendling, indicated that this was the case. There was also, second of all, errors in calculating initial and gradational losses by the city. In the real world, the city is actually only retaining approximately 64% of physical recharge credits from 2006 to 2016. And this was due to Mr. McCormick's testimony, not some sort of 80% number, which was identified just moments ago. In fact, in the testimony, Mr. McCormick brought out his calculator and calculated those exact figures and testified that 64% was the retention rate. But furthermore, and so it's clear here that actual physical recharge credit retention has been much lower than the AMC accounting proposal would like you to believe. But also, the city's proposal is based on an annual accounting using January groundwater levels, which fails to take into account peak pumping periods and water table fluctuations throughout the year. But these are some of our initial threshold concerns with the city's proposal. Now we delve into the heart of our concerns, starting with the new minimum index level. The first major argument that we've identified has to do with the legality of the city's approach of lowering the minimum index level. It is the district's position that the city has a contractual commitment not to drop below the 1993 levels. This contractual obligation is shown through a memorandum of understanding, permit conditions, and promises made to domestic owners through letters that induce the domestic owners to concede to the spacing and consent waivers. So indeed, it's our position that the city is contractually obligated not to lower to a new bottom. But moving beyond that, we come to an argument we raised in our motion to dismiss from the Claussen case. The Claussen case is black letter law in Kansas, and it says that one can't retroactively change permit conditions. So in other words, neither the city, the Division of Water Resources, or the district has the power to bless these retroactive changes to permits. I think it's important to try and focus us in on what matters here, to quote the words of the Claussen case. The Claussen case states directly, quote, "In sum, KWAA does not authorize the chief engineer to reevaluate and reconsider an approval once a permit has been issued." So in other words, if the city hasn't filed a change application or a new application, they can't just retroactively change to a new bottom or modify permit conditions. But moving beyond that, we come to the takings clause argument. And certainly, the Division of Water Resources spent a lot of time attacking this takings clause argument approach and talks about how water is dedicated to all users and things of that nature, which of course, as the district, we understand. We understand that well. Because that's different from what our position is in this case. Our position is that water rights are real property rights. And if those are infringed upon, it can constitute a taking. Likewise, if you have an expectation to the value of your land and that value is undermined, that likewise interferes with a property interest. And that's what we heard here. We heard the testimony of landowners that identified significant value of their land and their water rights. They indicated their investment expectation to that future use. The city's proposal threatens to undermine that viability through extreme water withdrawals that will drop the water table to a new harmful level and interfere with water quality. The taking of water is based on water the city doesn't own, and we agree with DWR, was not placed there by the city in the first place and is dedicated to other water users. This is a textbook takings clause violation. But moving beyond the takings clause, the next concern we have with lowering the minimum index level has to do with spacing waivers. These permits, in short, don't meet spacing. The old ASR physical recharge credit permits were granted based on knowledge that water would be added to the aquifer and the water levels wouldn't be dropped below the 1993 levels. The city's October 10, 2008, letter to the Groundwater Management District Board requested the spacing waivers for Phase II applications specifically be conditioned on the fact that water would not be withdrawn below the 1993 levels. These conditions aren't present with aquifer maintenance credits or the revised minimum index levels. As a consequence, any of these spacing waivers that were granted in the past are now irrelevant, and the city's new approach does not meet spacing. Yet another easy threshold reason why this proposal must be denied. But moving beyond spacing, we've come to safe yield, a very, very important concept. Again, based on the three orders adopted in this case, an issue that must be resolved by you as the hearing officer. Indeed, it is our position that the city's idea of lowering to a new minimum index level simply does not meet safe yield. KAR 5-3-9B states that, "Unless otherwise provided by regulation, it shall be considered to be in the public interest that only the safe yield of any sources of water supply shall be appropriated." Existing ASR permits are exempt from safe yield regulation. However, it is our position that the proposed AMCs, in conjunction with lowering the minimum index levels, are not exempt. You may recall that Mr. Bays calculated the safe yields of all thirty of the city's existing permits and the city's dismissed permits. None of them met safe yield. As you heard, some of them were over-appropriated up to four times over. Moreover, no new permits, except for the city's ASR permits and perhaps some temporary or small-use permits, have been approved in the Wichita Well Field area for over four decades because it is so heavily appropriated. Lowering to a new minimum index level infringes upon the very concept of safe yield. But moving beyond some of these initial concerns, which are plenty of grounds to deny the city's proposal, we come to the practical effects of lowering to a new minimum index level. First of all, the effect to minimum desirable stream flow. We produced extensive modeling and testimony from Dave Romero and others indicating the drastic effects of withdrawing accumulated credits below the 1993 levels. On the other hand, the city didn't do any modeling in that regard, even though the city was obligated to pursuant to the governing statutes and regulations. So indeed, you have the district's testimony here showing that dropping to a new minimum index level has the certain effect of interfering with minimum desirable stream flow. But the next major concern has to do with water quality. The districts and the intervenors presented evidence that lowering the minimum index level could result in the harmful spread of chloride, arsenic, and other harmful contaminants. Once again, the city failed to model this at all, even though it is a legal requirement of KSA 82A-711, which is incorporated through those orders I cited earlier. In addition to the previous considerations, there are major public interest concerns with dropping to a new bottom. You heard that there are two types of impairment. There's direct well-to-well impairment, and there's also the impairment to the overall health of the aquifer. Mr. Romero, in his testimony, indicated that both types of impairment will occur if you adopt the city's proposal. He indicated that individual wells will be impacted by dropping to a new minimum index level, and he also talked about how it would interfere with the overall health of the aquifer. But you may also recall that there was a lot of discussion about saturated thickness versus practical saturated thickness. You heard the testimony on practical saturated thickness, and the reality was that when you look at the well logs and the actual data, there's simply just not as much water in the aquifer as the city would like you to believe. In fact, Mr. Laterno and Mr. Bays both testified as to this concern when they looked at the actual well logs. Mr. Bays presented hydrographs of the drastic effects that would occur if we dropped to a new minimum index level on the practical saturated thickness. So, in sum, on minimum index levels, the city's cursory modeling shows general impacts during a 1% drought to water levels by index cell, but is not specific to well locations and doesn't take into account the practical saturated thickness. Mr. Laterno recommended that, in the future, this actual well data and practical saturated thickness should be taken into account. Indeed, this should be done before the city's proposal is approved. So for all these reasons, the minimum index level should not be lowered. But moving beyond the minimum index level concerns, we come to the concept of aquifer maintenance credits. Aquifer maintenance credits, a term that is not defined by statute or regulation. In fact, aquifer maintenance credits are specifically prohibited by statutes and regulations. There was a detailed statutory analysis provided by Mr. Bays and Mr. Pope. As they indicated, all definitions refer to physical artificial recharge of the aquifer to accumulate credits. The very definition of, quote, "aquifer storage and recovery system" found in regulation specifies that artificial recharge must occur and that source water is stored for subsequent recovery. Artificial recharge is defined as the use of source water to artificially replenish the water supply of the aquifer. Source water is defined, in part, as the above base flow stage in the river. Accounting is defined, in part, as taking into account the water entering and leaving the aquifer. The water is to be used for subsequent appropriation and refers to water being put in the unsaturated portion of the aquifer. The city, on the other hand, wants to divert water directly to the city when the aquifer is already fully saturated, contrary to these very definitions. Consequently, AMCs cannot be part of an aquifer storage and recovery system because the main component of artificial recharge is missing. The source water is not placed in the aquifer to artificially replenish the aquifer, and no source water is stored in the aquifer for subsequent recovery. Mr. Bays and Mr. Pope, who have dedicated their careers to analyzing these statutes and regulations, both indicated that AMCs are prohibited. But a moment ago, we also heard mention of the concept of functional equivalence. Once again, functional equivalent, a definition not found in statute or regulation. A definition or a concept as applied to aquifer maintenance credits that is a mere figment of the city's imagination. Again, not blessed by Kansas water law. But we move beyond that to the concept of passive recharge credits. David Pope defined passive recharge credits as water the city could have pumped, but didn't. David Pope provided a detailed analysis of what storage meant as he arrived at his conclusions. Passive recharge credits were prohibited based on representations made by the city and the prior orders of the chief engineer. Indeed, the Division of Water Resources just indicated a moment ago that their position is still against passive recharge credits. Specifically, passive recharge credits were also prohibited in both ASR Phase I and Phase II approval orders of the chief engineer. David Pope emphasized that the city's aquifer maintenance credit concept is nothing more but rank passive recharge credits. Even Mr. Pejor, in cross-examination, finally agreed that nobody should get credit for water not pumped. But moving beyond the concept of passive recharge credits, we come to the Kansas Water Appropriation Act. And the very heart of this act, which is the concept of first-in-time, first-in-right. The city's aquifer maintenance credit proposal, to make no mistake, will violate this very core principle of this statute that we all hold so dear. This was proven by various testimony of landowners and the district's experts that demonstrated that the city's attempts to withdraw water, it didn't place in the aquifer in the first place, is junior to the rights of other water users in a very over-appropriated portion of the aquifer. Aquifer maintenance credits allow the city to withdraw that water out of the aquifer at a later time based on water that was never injected there in the first place. And so that water taken out has to be infringing upon more senior water users in the aquifer. Violates the very heart of the Kansas Water Appropriation Act. But moving beyond these threshold concerns, we come to the practical effects, once again, of the AMC approach. Again, similar to lowering to a new minimum index level, we have the impacts on minimum we have the impacts on minimum desirable stream flow. You heard testimony that additional withdrawals of up to 120,000 acre-feet of water over a designated period of time could have dire impacts. There was lots of graphs and statistics and modeling from our experts, including Mr. Romero, that indicated that this is a dire concern if these are withdrawn over a period of time. Although the annual withdrawal is indeed capped, as was identified a moment ago, the city could seek more permits in the future and only accelerate that withdrawal as time goes on, and that was also testified to. Various experts, indeed, from the district's side, testified to the drastic consequences to minimum desirable stream flow when these credits are withdrawn. The city, on the other hand, failed to model this at all, despite its statutory obligation to do so. But moving beyond the impacts to minimum desirable stream flow, we come to the concept of water quality. Various experts from the district indicated that withdrawing a massive amount of accumulated credits could have drastically adverse impacts to water quality. Once again, and we have a common theme here, the city failed to model this at all and did not present any testimony as to the impacts to water quality of withdrawing these accumulated credits. But moving beyond water quality and concerns with water quality and the sole evidence provided by the intervenors and the district on these elements, we come again to the concept of safe yield. Again, this is a horribly over-appropriated area of the aquifer that we're talking about. Withdrawing credits takes water out of the aquifer that was never placed there by the city in the first place and thus violates safe yield. As indicated, an aquifer storage and recovery permit application is exempt from safe yield. However, the proposed AMCs do not place any water into the aquifer for storage, nor add to the water supply. Therefore, AMCs would not qualify for safe yield exemption, and they violate this very principle. But again, we come to the concept of saturated thickness, and you may recall that there were hydrographs presented both to the impacts to lowering to a new minimum index level, but also the impacts of AMCs and withdrawing AMCs. Saturated thickness will also be interfered when we withdraw these aquifer maintenance credits. Again, the actual data and the actual well logs paint a dire picture. There is not as much water in the aquifer in these areas as the city would like you to believe through its modeling. Again, a major concern with aquifer maintenance credits. But the next major concern has to do with the impact to the public interest. Again, you heard that there were multiple forms of impairment that were identified by Mr. Romero. First of all, he said that withdrawing AMCs would cause impairment to individual wells, and he said that was nearly a certainty. And he also said that it would interfere with the overall health of the aquifer. Again, Mr. Romero, through detailed analysis, a very, very credentialed expert, indicated that it's not just a remote possibility, but a near certainty that well-to-well impairment and overall health of the aquifer will be adversely impacted. In fact, the city actually acknowledged that this may be a possibility, and through the testimony of Mr. Clement, indicated that, you know, if we interfere with individual wells, we could simply drill some deeper wells in the future. However, you also heard some testimony of those very familiar with drilling wells who indicated that it could take weeks, months, or much longer for these wells to be drilled. A dissatisfying remedy at best. But moving beyond those concerns, we come again to the concept of a double benefit. I demonstrated just a moment ago how it creates a two-for-one on gallons while tapping into a completely undefined source of water. You know, if this was a tort case, which it's not, and we understand that, we would argue concepts such as equitable estoppel, conversion, unjust enrichment, among many other concepts to defeat the city's proposal. But indeed, here the point is still clear. The city is doubling their consumptive use. We also argued through testimony that this is a new type of consumptive use and also a new undefined source of water. So, for all of those reasons, I think it is painfully obvious that aquifer maintenance credits cannot be allowed. Although the city may argue and has argued that they desperately need this proposal for future water planning, alternatives for drought planning do exist for the city, such as multi-year flex accounts. The city could simply operate under the same rules and the same playing field as everybody else. Again, there's no hate toward the city, as was identified previously. We're just simply asking that the city operate under the same multi-year flex accounts that are utilized by the other water users in the aquifer. So, undeniably, for all of these reasons, we don't think the city's proposal should be granted as it is facially illegal and invalid, relies on voodoo science, and will have drastic impacts to the aquifer and the other users that rely on this vital resource. However, in the event that this was somehow entertained for approval, which it clearly should not be, there would need to be extensive additional modeling performed by the city and detailed, carefully crafted permit conditions as testified to by the Division of Water Resources, the city, and the district. And indeed, those detailed permit conditions were outlined in great detail in the hearing and will be further briefed. It would also require a statutory and regulatory change before the city's proposal could be approved. Thus, it merits mentioning once again that the city has no standing to pursue its proposal at this point in time. So, as I conclude my remarks, we circle back to the magic act being sought by the city. In the words of David Pope, aquifer maintenance credits are "fictitious credits." These credits are a mere figment of an abstract imagination by the city. The city should not be allowed to pursue these phantom credits through a crafty and elaborate bait-and-switch mockery of current law. Mark Twain once prophetically quipped, "Whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting for." Among many concerns, lowering the minimum index levels and allowing the city to accumulate and withdraw aquifer maintenance credits creates the ominous and overwhelming probability of adversely impacting other groundwater users, water quality, and minimum desirable stream flow. The city has not met its burden of proof on any of these categories. So indeed, as the district, we feel the overarching responsibility to battle for, defend, and protect the critical resource known as the equus beds, aquifer. Consequently, we are vigorously opposed to the illusionary trick represented by the city's proposal. I would also like to reserve 20 minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wendling?
Thank you. I will do my best, as well as everyone else, to keep my comments brief and reserved detail for the future briefs. We believe the city has failed to meet its burden of proof, and that these proposed changes are reasonable, will not cause impairment, or enter in the public interest. The city's proposal includes a simulated drought with carefully selected inputs as justification for wanting additional water rights. The simulation analyzes only the impact of the carefully curated model stress period. The requested index levels and the 120,000 acre-feet in AMCs are not inputs considered in the model. Far more study and analysis is needed to counter the decades of being told the aquifer is over-appropriated and it's not safe to go below the 1993 levels. For example, what if we don't enter the drought at the 1998 starting levels selected by the city for their model? For the city, the 98 levels were selected because they were the best match for representing groundwater levels required to maintain the 30 million gallon daily of physical ASR recharge capacity. The city does not claim the 98 levels represent an average aquifer level or any reason whatsoever that the 98 levels should be the starting point, other than if the aquifer had remained at 98 levels, the ASR project would have performed. The absence of any scenarios other than the single scenario supporting the city's request is troubling for those of us who rely exclusively on the equus beds for water. The city's analysis did provide simulated groundwater levels and average saturated thickness for index cells during year eight of the simulated drought. Unfortunately, as Mr. Stuckey just described, this did not provide information on the accessibility and availability of quality water for human use at actual well locations. These simulated groundwater levels provide no indication regarding quality of water or the impact on known potential contaminants. This large gap between the credit usage modeled in the simulated drought and what the city is seeking with the proposal. For example, the city is seeking credits that would cover them during two back-to-back 1% droughts, yet is only modeled as single drought. Further analysis is clearly needed to show the impacts of the city's proposal. Expert testimony has shown the very real possibility that the modifications requested by the city would unreasonably lower the water level, negatively impact stream flow, and harm water quality. The equus beds is a shared resource in a very heavily concentrated area of water users. The city is proposing an excessive drain on this limited resource at a time when the resource is at its most valuable. This is a very real-world concern impacting equus bed water users, not only during a potential drought, but for an unspecified period of time following the drought. No data has been provided on the length of time it will take the equus beds to recover from the proposed pumping of AMCs during the 1% drought or going down below the 1993 levels. These harms and risks are not merely speculative. Knowing that these additional uses of water will occur during a drought makes it even more likely that these harms would occur. The city's proposal does not limit the use of this additional water two times a drought, and they are seeking permission to take these additional credits or lower levels whenever they would like to. As Mr. Stuckey has said, the AMCs are not provided for under Kansas water law. And although the city's proposal presents this as a modification to ASR permits, the AMCs, in actuality, have nothing to do with ASRs. Just as water currently diverted from the little Arkansas River, treated and used directly by the city, is currently performed under the existing permit, it does not make that activity ASR activity, nor is a recharge credit a functional equivalent of a recharge credit, and it should not be allowed. Ultimately, the city's request for AMCs is a request to appropriate groundwater from an over-appropriated region of the aquifer. The city's proposal is a request for a new appropriation and should be treated as a new appropriation following the procedures and safeguards established for such new applications, including safe yield analysis. If it has been determined that the aquifer is not fully over-appropriated and it is in the public interest to grant new appropriations, due process requires that all previously denied applications be reconsidered prior to this request from the city. The AMCs being requested are speculative, future need. If storage and drought mitigation are to be added as beneficial uses, those uses should similarly be made available to all water users. As Mr. Karp testified, the missed economic opportunities of denying applications for decades due to an over-appropriated aquifer to the entire community cannot be ignored in now determining that almost 120,000 acre-feet of water is available to appropriate to the city in this new form of credit. Unlike local users of the equus beds with return flows recharging the aquifer, the city wants the new appropriation to export water out of the equus beds in a fully consumptive use with no benefit to the equus beds. The creation of AMCs for leaving water in the aquifer is a very dangerous precedent. Water users across the state regularly leave water in the aquifer and invest their own funds to conserve water and leave increasingly more water in the equus beds. The 1993 minimum index levels were agreed on as a protective measure and the result of extensive negotiations. The city now seeking to lower these protective levels without evaluating the impact of such a change on water users and the sustainable health of the aquifer cannot be allowed. As mentioned, the equus beds is fully appropriated, and those property rights belong to multiple individuals, including my clients, the City of Wichita, and many others. By skipping the recharge process, the city seeks to convert the fully appropriated native water in the aquifer to recharge water dedicated exclusively to the City of Wichita. This is simply a physical taking of water that has been appropriated to others. Decades of denied permit applicants show that water in the equus beds has been fully appropriated. Those previously denied applications cannot be ignored if water is now suddenly available for appropriation. The aquifer drawdown caused by the use of AMCs and lowered index levels is likely to accelerate chloride contamination from both the Burton Chloride Plume and the Arkansas River. This chloride contamination could cause significant economic harm, destroying the value of productive cropland and homes of those currently relying on the equus beds. My clients and many others, including local communities, have invested in land, their homes, businesses, irrigation systems, conservation efforts, soil improvements, livestock, farm equipment, local co-ops, grain elevators, other ag-supported businesses, and many other items which depend on the availability of quality water under existing and long-standard water appropriation rights. A new appropriation in the form of AMCs or the removal of protective measures such as the minimum index levels must not be allowed to impair, harm, or interfere with those rights. The burden of proving this potential impairment should not fall on local residents, and the potential for impairment should be considered before making a decision to grant such a large appropriation of water. The city has claimed that the proposal is only about the accumulation of credits and not the use of those credits. However, to consider the public interest, we have to contemplate the withdrawal of these credits from the aquifer. When it comes to such a large appropriation, mistakes and miscalculations can be disastrous. The city attributes the full state of the aquifer to implementation of the Integrated Local Water Supply Plan in 1993. This was 10 years prior to the city applying for Phase 1 of the ASR project in 2003, and 20 years before Phase 2 was implemented in 2013. Why, after 20 years, wasn't the city aware of the issues of a full aquifer? The limitations of the ASR project are not new, and the dilemma facing the city today could have been ascertained by the city long before this proposal and before investing over $200 million in ASR. A reasonable person, considering the public interest, has to question whether we can rely on the city and their same experts who either invested such a large sum while failing to consider their own impact on the aquifer that they control, or knowingly invested the money in the project with full knowledge of this limitation. My clients rely exclusively on the equus beds and do not have duplicate sources of water as the City of Wichita has. They are very concerned about the actual impact these modifications will have on the equus beds and then personally when the city withdraws the AMCs or draws down the aquifer to the new lowered levels. A thorough analysis of multiple possible scenarios with an independent review is necessary to prevent irreversible damage. What are the impacts of allowing AMCs without performing recharge? Water right holders throughout the state leave water in storage when they do not pump their full appropriations, invest in water conservation, and other efforts to conserve water. Can these water right users also get a future credit for water left in storage? And if that is allowed, what is the long-term impact? The questions still need to be answered before a decision can properly be made regarding this proposal. As Mr. Stuckey said, extensive further analysis is necessary. Now, the city has presented the very real risks identified in this process of the city pumping their native groundwater rights. This is a very real risk and something This is a very real risk and something that has been avoided due to the city's luxury of having multiple waters resources and their management of the equis beds. Understanding that past appropriation decisions have already created a serious problem is not a reason to grant additional water rights that would exacerbate the problem. The city's proposal does not include a limit to prevent pumping of native water rights or prevent them in any way from pumping the hole that they have threatened to pump over the past several years. These past few days of extreme weather have demonstrated that even the best played plans can go awry. Planning for extreme events such as droughts are necessary, and the public benefits from such planning. Access to essential water during a severe drought is important for everyone. But awkwardly modifying an ASR permit to create a fictitious credit and allow the recovery of water without performing recharge is not the right solution. I hope that we can find a solution that fits within the constraints of Kansas Water Law to address drought planning for the people of the state of Kansas. However, at this time, we believe the city's proposed modification should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. I think at this time, it might be appropriate to take a ten-minute break, and then we'll return for rebuttal arguments. So for now, we will be off the record.
I called Murphy.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Well, you need to call him, but maybe that panel is not right, too. Good morning. Hello? Yes? It says mute.
Okay, I think it's been about ten minutes. Do we have everyone back? Let's see, I see Brian, I see Tessa, Stephanie, Dave.
Here, still.
And, and Tom, are you back?
I'm back.
Great. Okay. Nancy, let's go back on the record. After a short break, we are now back on the record, and we have had closing arguments from all council. And now we move to the time that they have each reserved for rebuttal. They've each reserved twenty minutes, and we will start with Ryan McLeod for the city.
Thank you. Of the many, many points stated by council for the district and for intervenors, there were a lot of them that seemed legally or factually mistaken, but we won't respond to all of them this morning in the time permitted, having to be selective. On the point that there could be later ASR Phase Two wells, and that the city could accelerate withdrawals in the future via additional wells. Obviously, you know, any such additional wells would have to be permitted and would go through the process, hearing process for permitting, and any issues with problems arising from any impacts of those wells would be studied in that process. So that's not really a concern. As far as what the city is required to show by the hearing orders, I rather concur with council for DWR's remarks that the city has met those burdens, showing really benefits in all relevant periods, and slight, slight detriment only in the occurrence of the model date-year drought, which is still offset by benefits even in that period. I don't agree with council's contention that there is any unreasonable lowering of the water table. I think council's casting of the Balu modeling as showing dire consequences for minimum desirable stream flow and the water table and the impacts on wells is just not an accurate characterization of the Balu modeling. And really, if you look at the Balu modeling, it confirms that the impacts of the new index levels are slight. The effects on individual wells, slight. The effects on the water table, slight. So just no factual foundation for all of those statements that have been, that have been allegedly based on that modeling. It's also curious that, that we're raising this notion of minimum desirable stream flow in a time of drought. You know, I think when Mr. Austin was testifying, he recognized that even in real time, even in the context of administration, DWR will let MBS issues go sometimes for a period of several years to see if there's, you know, really a persisting problem versus some transitory condition. And particularly, you would expect that in time of drought, when you're not going to meet minimum desirable stream flow no matter what. It's, it's not a rational argument. It's just not, and it doesn't comport with water rights practice or DWR's historic treatment of minimum desirable stream flow issues. I think that there have been, if I'm not mistaken, past changes, actually, to the, to the ASR permits, to the minimum index levels, some corrections, and there have been other minor changes. And I disagree with council's characterization that these changes are just so great that they don't fit within the scope of permissible changes that can be made without a new application or a change application. The AMCs are not a major change. They are, as, as former chief engineer Barfield said, the functional equivalent of the existing physical recharge credits. Likewise, and for all the same reasons, the physical recharge credits don't affect fair yield modeling. The AMCs will not affect fair yield modeling. They will not have any impact on fair yield, and that argument is, is not a well-founded argument. Also, the index levels, that is a slight change. And I believe that the Balu modeling itself shows that the impacts are also very slight. With perhaps six domestic wells affected. And as to terming that at some kind of dire impairment. It, it isn't. A momentary impact on wells that can be extended is not an impairment. It hasn't been treated as an impairment in Kansas Water Rights Practice. And, and there may be some momentary inconvenience. That is, that is possible, and it's something the city would, of course, attempt to cooperate to avoid if possible, but that is still not an impairment. And the, the results, the modeling results of Mr. Romero's study are simply not being accurately represented by council. They don't show what they're being claimed to show at all. And, and actually, it was good that Valu did have that modeling because it helps to support the city's proposal and provide additional reasons, a showing of slight impact. Even in the drought scenario that favor granting the proposed modifications. With respect to the idea that the city should be capped at fifty thousand acre feet because that's what the city should need in a single modeled eight-year drought. That doesn't really make sense. If the city has injected or accrued AMCs in a much larger amount, the city should be allowed to do that for back-to-back eight-year droughts. As a conservative safeguard, if it chooses. But the hundred and twenty thousand acre foot cap, whether the district likes it or not, is more of a cap than there has ever been. And was the city's suggestion to begin with, not something that was proposed by the District of Anishio. As for the, the differences between between Mr. Austin's work and Mr. McCormick's work being termed errors by council. They're not errors, and it's, it's clear from Mr. McCormick's testimony that the leakage variance, for example, between actual leakage and physical recharge and the leakage assumptions that are used for AMCs are very purposeful. There's a reason for using them, and Mr. McCormick explained those in his testimony. And it's, it's just not true to say that he made errors. He is employing different assumptions. And that the same is true for his initial loss and other the other variances. If you compare the two reports, you'll see that Mr. McCormick's numbers are different. Because he's, he's not using the same methodology or approach as Mr. Austin, but it's not because he's making a mistake. With respect to the contractual obligation argument about a guaranteed nineteen ninety-three floor. Now, there has never been any agreement in any context to guarantee a nineteen ninety-three floor. In fact, it's abundantly clear in every context that the city can go below that with its forty thousand acre foot native rights at any time. And in fact, had the city not reversed its management policies in nineteen ninety-three. Levels in the aquifer would have gone below the nineteen ninety-three levels. The only reason they didn't was the city's change in practice. And that's why the nineteen ninety-three levels are preserved today as the historic lows. With respect to the MOU. We feel that that document has been effectively abandoned by the district because there were requirements in the MOU for periodic evaluation and revision of the document, and simply that process never occurred. Reflecting that the, the district didn't follow up on the conditions to adjust to that document and perpetuate it over the long term. With respect to the, to the spacing waivers argument, those waivers, I believe, were approved by DWR. There is no principle by which the waivers would suddenly vanish into thin air. Because one of the facets that was considered in the, in the GMD two recommendation on the waivers has changed. All of the damage and taking arguments. They are also not factually supported. They're not supported by Mr. Romero's work. They're not supported by consequences that are shown or likely as to the intervenors who have testified with respect to the proposal. And if, if you know what those folks testified to, many of them complained about conditions of the existing permits. They complained about chloride impacts. I believe Mr. Basor acknowledged that he already had them, and Mr. Carmichael acknowledged that he was on the threshold of the area that that is expected to have them. And those, those well owners are going to have those chloride impacts. If the city has to do the physical recharge approach, they will have worse chloride impacts. Then they will with the city's proposed modifications. And I think we can ascertain that by looking at the chloride studies. And Burns and Mack didn't do extensive modeling of chloride because so much chloride work has already been done in the aquifer. And the twenty fourteen study shows us with the double pumping scenario, you know, what might be the transitory impact. That that would be somewhat indicative of what happens in the drought period. But the, the much greater impact will be if the city has to bring those water levels down to nineteen ninety-eight levels and maintain them there for a long period of years. That's going to have a much greater impact on chloride migration and all of the well owners that are concerned about that. So again, they've inadvertently compared the proposal's impact to their, to their dream scenario. Rather than comparing it to what will actually happen if the proposal's not approved. And the city has to accumulate its credits by drawing the aquifer down and pursuing physical recharge to accrue physical recharge credits. With respect to the, to the whole notion of passive recharge credits, I guess indeed, one former chief engineer believes that that AMCs infringe that concept of of bad passive recharge credits. Another former chief engineer, Mr. Barfield, doesn't believe that and believes that they can be distinguished for the reasons that that Ms. Murray explained. How all of the surface water comes in through the ASR infrastructure and is subject to the permit conditions. And is basically the water that could have been injected into the aquifer had there been space for that physical recharge. Also, functional equivalent is not a figment of the city's imagination. But clearly, former chief engineer Barfield recognized that concept as well, showed that he understood it. Agreed with it and believed that it was reasonable. And it, it is logical and rational. I, I think there's not a way to rationally avoid the conclusion that the AMCs are the functional equivalent of physical recharge credits. You're just skipping the intermediate step of pumping the hole in the aquifer and then plugging it with a new infusion of water. Then there was one thing that I wanted to address in Ms. Wendling's comments. Where she, she indicated an issue with the use of the nineteen ninety-eight water levels in the modeling. And I think this is, this is perhaps a failure to understand. Recall that the elements of the city's proposal are independent. And it's possible that the, that the credits assumed in the modeling for the index level analysis could be physical, or they could be AMC. We don't know. Because the city might be restricted to physical credits, it made sense to do that modeling based on use of the water levels that would be associated with the city having had to go through the process for physical recharge credits. In other words, we've, we've modeled the index level issues with the assumption that the AMCs have been denied, and the city's doing physical recharge credits, and that's the reason the modeling is done with the nineteen ninety-eight levels because when the city goes down that road to pull the aquifer down and do physical recharge, nineteen ninety-eight levels. Is where the aquifer will be. And those are the levels in which in that scenario, the aquifer will go into the one percent drought if it occurs. And I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that Balu also used those nineteen ninety-eight levels in their modeling as well. So I think that's the reason. It was intentional, and it made sense because we're, we're modeling the index level issue without knowledge of the source of the credits. And further responses to the extent. They may be warranted. We will just save for the written stage.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLeod. Ms. Murray?
Yes, thank you. I do have just a few comments. So as, as Mr. McLeod also kind of alluded to. It is our view that, that essentially the city's modeling does constitute a showing of the things that Mr. Stuckey referenced that are required by the governing orders, things like impairments and impacts to MDS and unreasonable raising or lowering of the water table won't occur. Realizing, you know, that there are, are differences in opinion of the adequacy of that modeling. As I spoke earlier, we, we do feel it was adequate, and we feel that that, that that modeling did, did constitute that showing. Along the lines of whether impairment will occur or is likely to occur, Mr. McLeod also sort of alluded to this. It is not necessarily per se impairment, just because a, a user or some users may have to drill their wells deeper. Of course, there's case law out there on that, and I think that's really an issue to be further fleshed out in the, in the briefs, but I just wanted to make that point. As well as that, the Clausen case that Mr. Stuckey referenced. I think the true applicability of that case and whether it's exactly on point to this situation is, is also really an issue for the briefs. I think that there's arguments to be made that that there are some nuances there that, that don't apply directly to this instance. Expanding a little bit also on what Mr. McLeod said about past definitions or, or lack of definition of of passive recharge. I, if I'm not mistaken, I, I don't remember what document it was exactly, but I, I think that former chief engineer Pope quote-unquote defined passive recharge in, in a parenthetical of some sort in a past order and and I don't think that you can say that he created with that sort of parenthetical statement that, that he created a definition of passive recharge that we are all beholden to forever going forward. As, as Mr. McLeod pointed out. Mr. Barfield had a different interpretation, and I think that it, that was a valid one. I don't think that Mr. Pope created a definition that, that Mr. Barfield or any future chief engineer would then necessarily be tied to. Um, on the topic of, of ASR credits being junior rights, I just want to point out that, you know, priority of a, of a water right only really comes into play when there's not enough water to go around, i.e. when an impairment of some sort is occurring. As has been mentioned a lot, we don't feel that it will, but if it does, we will address it. When it happens, that's the way that we treat any sort of an impairment type of situation. Again, maintaining the aquifer at a fuller level is better for water quality, and that'll be the case the majority of the time under this proposal. And then lastly, Mr. Stuckey has, has brought up a multi-year flex account several times as, as what the district, you know, thinks would be a good option for the city rather than to go forward with this proposal. It's never been DWR's opinion that a MIFIA is a good option for a municipality. Simply because it can sort of, just by the way that a MIFIA functions, you could use you know, more water at the beginning of it and then run out of water at the end. We recognize obviously that that is problematic for any type of water user. But for a municipality, it carries real, you know, public health and safety implications. We, we don't want to create a situation where we're even opening the door for you know, hospitals, schools, et cetera, to run out of water in the last years of a MIFIA. Then I guess I, I do just want to address, it's been characterized a few times that, that the city has threatened that they will just pump the hole in the aquifer if they don't get this proposal approved. And I just want to, I guess, set the record straight a little bit because that's, in my mind, that's not a threat. And, and I, I don't really like that characterization of it because it's it's simply just what the city could do and, and may have to do if this proposal is not approved. So I, I think that's all the comments I want to make for now. As Mr. McLeod said, obviously a lot remains for the briefs, but I will call it good there for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stuckey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I proceed with my final comments, I just want to commend all council for their well-thought-out opposing arguments. Truly, it's apparent everybody put some real time and effort into thinking through their closings today, and although we may have spirited disagreements. I'm not going to have the opportunity to talk with any of you after that, after this hearing, so I just want to say thanks for the spirited comments that were raised here. But with that in mind, obviously, as the district, we have vast differences of opinion as far as what the city's proposal means, what the modeling means. And indeed, we stand by all the statements that were made in my initial comments. Of course, I'm not going to go through all those points again. But I think the points are very strong, and they're also very clear. But with that in mind, it was, there's just a few comments that I heard in additional, additional statements from council that I think are worth rebutting or worth addressing, so I'm just going to go through just a few of those points. First of all, Mr. McLeod indicated that the impacts on the aquifer from withdrawing these credits or lowering to a new minimum desirable or new minimum index level are overstated. Again, I think this will be briefed extensively. There was a lot of testimony from Mr. Romero. He had graphs, he had charts, all kinds of extensive modeling that he did that showed these impacts, both with respect to lowering to a new minimum index level and with respect to withdrawing the aquifer maintenance credits. He showed that there were very, very significant impacts, and we can brief that in great detail. So that's simply just a mischaracterization. Second of all, with respect to minimum desirable stream flow, I heard I think Mr. McLeod say that this was a nonsensical argument of sorts, that minimum desirable stream flow would be interfered with. Again, it's, it's just groundwater one-on-one, that there's an interconnectedness between surface water, river flow, and groundwater. And so it makes perfectly logical sense that if you're pulling water out of an aquifer and as you would do with aquifer maintenance credits, and you reduce that level to a new minimum index level. It's going to cause withdrawals. It's going to impact minimum desirable stream flow. It's just a very simple common sense argument that we're making. But again, you don't have to rely on common sense. We'll brief in, in our, in our briefs extensively how this was modeled and predicted by our experts. But it was also mentioned by Mr. McLeod that the district has failed to follow the memorandum of understanding. We deny that. There is a condition in there that the district and the city need to work together to do some monitoring and analysis. And so in the event the city is arguing that the district failed to follow the memorandum of understanding, since it's a joint responsibility. The city is essentially arguing that it, it itself has failed to follow the memorandum of understanding, but it's the district, district's position that we have. Moving on to this concept of a functional equivalent, whether this is a species of the imagination of David Barfield, or this was a concept that came, was, was developed by the, the city of Wichita. Again, it really doesn't matter. Functional equivalent is not defined in case law. It's not defined in statute, regulation as it applies to aquifer maintenance credits. So the point's the same. Simply no applicability here, and I'm going to circle back to that point at the end of my remarks because I think it's quite important. But another major point that I think is worth raising and worth addressing is some of the assumptions that are made by the Division of Water Resources and by the district. The city and the Division of Water Resources are arguing and contending that this is a good proposal because the aquifer is going to be kept full. That the city will maintain this aquifer at this nearly full condition and as a consequence. and as a consequence, it's good for all water users. Another assumption we've heard is that the city is going to first take water from Cheney Reservoir. But again, I guess I would submit to you as the hearing officer, where in writing do we have that these assumptions are going to actually be committed to by the city? Where do we have in writing that the city is going to first take from Cheney Reservoir? Where do we have in writing that the city of Wichita is going to ensure that the aquifer level is kept full? Indeed, there are no permit conditions as they exist that require the city to do any of these things. And in the past, and again, I really hate to live in the past and certainly there's no animosity toward the city by the district. And so I'm really trying to hesitate to live in the past, but I think it's worth mentioning that in the past, the city has committed, and I indicated that contractual commitment in so many different ways. Letters to the district, letters to landowners, permits, memorandums of understanding, the city committed in a whole bunch of different ways to keep at the current minimum index level and now is breaking that commitment. And so this notion of all these assumptions, the city is going to keep the aquifer full, pull water from Cheney Reservoir first, all these assumptions, we have no assurances that any of that will occur. And those are all just a bunch of assumptions that the city's analysis as far as the benefits are based on. But moving beyond that, I mentioned the animosity toward the city. You know, that is something that we're very sensitive to as the district. Historically, I think the district and the city have collaborated and worked together very well on a number of projects. The original ASR permitting approach and the physical recharge concept was a very revolutionary concept. And I think the district proved to be a very good partner in that. And Mr. Baz, all the way back to the early 1990s, the inception of it, I think has always been a good partner, has always been very involved. He testified that he wants to be a good partner with the city. And so this has nothing to do with animosity toward the city, absolutely nothing to do with it. It's just simply put that the district believes that this is not a beneficial concept or a beneficial idea. The idea of lowering to a new minimum index level and to take out these fictitious or illusionary aquifer maintenance credits and withdraw them. Again, just not a good concept and that's demonstrated by extensive modeling. Nothing to do with any kind of animosity toward the city. I also heard mention of the fact that this is just some sort of speculative danger. This impairment is speculative. I heard mention of that, but again, and it was also, I think, mentioned that this is something that could be addressed in the future. And that's part of what you do with impairment. But again, if you read the governing statute that is cited in the three orders, two signed by Mr. Barfield and one signed by you as the hearing officer, it indicates that impairment needs to be considered upfront. It's not something that's just addressed at a later time. And we have clearly shown that impairment, two types of impairment will be caused, both from lowering the minimum index level and from withdrawing these aquifer maintenance credits. And so this is far, far, far from a speculative danger. This is a real threat, a real danger that we've been able to show through our modeling. I think I did hear in the final comments from the Division of Water Resources that they're now conceding that safe yield, minimum desirable stream flow, all those elements need to be shown upfront by the city. I think they revised their argument in that regard. So I think we all agree that that's something now that the city must show. But this concept of passive recharge credits, again, we hear, we're hearing talk about passive recharge credits. And I'm just going to circle back for a moment to the hearing. Mr. McCormick and Mr. Pager, a variety of different witnesses from the city were on the stand and I was cross-examining them. And I said, so let me get this straight. When you left water in Cheney Reservoir, that was considered a passive recharge credit. You shouldn't get any credit just for simply leaving water in Cheney Reservoir, or I'm sorry, from pumping from Cheney Reservoir first. That was asked and they said, yes, that's a passive recharge credit. If we're given credit for pumping Cheney Reservoir first, that's very much so a passive recharge credit. So then I asked, well, let's say hypothetically that you pumped from El Dorado Reservoir or you take water out of the Arkansas River. And should you get a credit for that? And the implication was, yeah, that could be a passive recharge credit as well. And so I don't see how it's any different here. If the city tries to get some sort of credit for pumping directly out of the Little Arkansas River, sending it straight to the city of Wichita, how that's any different than trying to get a credit from pumping out of Cheney Reservoir? Again, logically consistent, it's the same thing. Again, if it's a duck quacks like a duck, it's certainly a duck. It's a passive recharge credit in this case, as obvious as I'm sitting here today. But moving beyond the concept of passive recharge credits and functional equivalence, again, I don't feel the need to circle back to all the arguments I raised before. We stand by them. This is going to cause harm to the aquifer in a whole variety of different ways if you adopt the city's proposal. It's going to interfere with all the other constituents of users of the aquifer with water quality, impairment, minimum desirable stream flow, a whole host of different harms that we've identified. And indeed, it's frankly illegal, it's not defined by statute. All the same concerns still exist, but I'm not going to go through them again. But with that in mind, I just want to mention and circle back to this concept of aquifer maintenance credits and physical recharge credits being the same because it's been raised over and over again. And so with that in mind, I'd just like to hold up for my screen just for a moment. I've written six concepts that have to do with aquifer maintenance credits and physical recharge. You can see here that the first one is water taken from the Little Arkansas River. And this is with respect to physical recharge credits. Water is taken from the Little Arkansas River, it's treated. And then it's injected into the aquifer, number three. Number four is the recharge credit is created based on beneficial use obtained for physical recharge. Number five, it's stored in the aquifer. And number six, it's then diverted to the city. Now, if we move to aquifer maintenance credits, what we can quickly do is just cross out three of the steps. We can just cross out the middle three steps because with aquifer maintenance credits, all that happens is water is taken out of the Little Arkansas River, diverted to the city of Wichita, it's treated, and then it's used by the city at a later time. So just the final three steps. We don't have any injection into the aquifer. We don't have any kind of recharge credit based on physical recharge. We don't have any kind of water that is stored in the aquifer or that can be placed there for some sort of subsequent use. The notion that this is a functional equivalent flies in the face of not only statutes and regulations, but plain common sense. And so for all of these reasons, we are asking you to deny the city's proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Ms. Wendling?
Just a few quick points. It was addressed that to be concerned with minimum desirable stream flow during a drought is a bit ironic. And I would just like to say that we're concerned about minimum desirable stream flow and the effects of this pumping on minimum desirable stream flow at all times. There is not a requirement in the proposal that the city keep the aquifer full and thereby protect minimum desirable stream flow. The city is not limited to using their credits only during times of drought. So that impact could happen at any point in time. And similarly, the city is not limited to drawing down to the new proposed minimum index levels only during a time of drought. The city is requesting these changes to apply at any point in time for the city to use how, when, and in any manner that they choose. And then going back to the reasonableness of the model for purposes of evaluating the proposal, it is hard for me to see how a model that considers less than half of the withdrawals contemplated is fit for purpose. The city's model does not match the terms that they are requesting in their proposal. The city's model does not contemplate a withdrawal, even at 19,000 acre feet per year, of the 120,000 acre feet of water of AMC's. The city's model does not reflect what happens if the aquifer is drawn down during time of drought to the newly proposed minimum index levels. These are the changes that should be in the model and would have eliminated a significant amount of uncertainty throughout this entire process. If those actual conditions that are being asked for had been modeled by the city, we could have saved ourselves a lot of trouble. And those are the two major things that I think need further consideration and analysis to appropriately make a decision regarding this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Having heard the closing arguments and rebuttal arguments from all council, believe it or not, that concludes.
Madam Hearing Officer, I'm sorry, could I?
There's something to add. We're never going to conclude this, are we?
I just wanted to address, Mr. Stuckey referenced in his rebuttal comments that DWR had in his thinking revised some of our arguments. Could I just address that just very, very quickly?
I think you can put that in your brief if you would like.
Okay.
I understand that might be efficient to let you do it now, but I think we better stick with our limitations on the responses right now. So at long last, this concludes the testimony, the public hearing testimony of this case after something like 13 days worth of testimony. As I mentioned earlier, public written comments will be accepted until 5:00 on February 26. And the instructions for doing that are on the Division of Water Resources website. They have a dedicated Wichita ASR page and that includes that information. At that time, the record will close on this case, so there will be no new evidence accepted after 5:00 PM on February 26. As I mentioned, following that, there will be briefing by the parties. And following that will be a recommended order that I will issue to the chief engineer and simultaneously to the parties. I do want to thank all council for their professional and enduring involvement in this case, especially in regards to responding to the disruptions of COVID-19. And I believe that also extends to your clients as well as to the public at large. So we've all had quite a bit of disruption due to the pandemic and this was no exception. So I appreciate everyone dealing with that with very good grace and class. Before we close the record for today, does anyone have anything else to mention? I would ask council to stay on for a few minutes after the record is closed. It is now 10:57 AM and we are now off the record.
Connie, do you need me to stay on?
I do not, Nancy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.